United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for being here. This is the February regular board meeting of the Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a motion to approve the minutes of January 10 special meeting, January 10 regular meeting, January 23 special meeting, and January 30th special meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. I will open with the mayor's report. I'm happy to tell you that as we began the week, there is actual work going on at John Steinbeck Waterfront Park. The, I don't always get the vocabulary the way Ed would have me do it, and Hollander, but they're sculpting now the rise above the beach, which forms a sort of a semicircle. And I don't know, I didn't get down there the second part of the day, whether any of the granite pieces have been delivered. But what's going to form there is, we use the word amphitheater because it's the only word we know, but there's, that sounds bigger than it is. It's a modest-sized gathering venue, if you will, and the seating, very much like at the church, same architect, as we know. There are granite slabs that will form seating in as natural a positioning as they can be. The work that will follow that will be to put in a number of other landscaping elements. As you recall, last fall, we managed to get in some beach grass and some of the native species that are going in. As this phase goes forward, there will be seeding and reseeding, some overseeding. We need to complete an irrigation system at the eastern end of the property. Our goal is to have all this completed by the Memorial Day weekend. And a part of the planting scheme will be to get some good-sized trees along the right-of-way, along the north side of the, I guess we still call it the 711 building, 22 Long Island Avenue. So that's exciting news. We have an order in now for the first 10 dedicated benches. These are benches that are part of our fundraising approach, people's, very similar to what we do elsewhere in the village. These are dedicated memorial or otherwise to family members, friends. People can tailor them as they like. They're a good-looking teak wood. The first six will go along the top of the beach area, along the walkway there. The next big stage after that will be to get a rail in that will take a visitor from the Steinbeck Waterfront around and under the bridge and into, along the walkway above Windmill Beach and connect up with Long Wharf, so that the three elements of whatever really an interconnected park will be better joined. And with the rail in place, I think we'll be more comfortable about proceeding with our plans for ADA full access as we go forward. And the fundraising effort is resuming. It got caught up in a lot of other things for a while, but we'll have more to say about that as we go forward. Next up, I want to report on the National Grid case. This is the parking lot, that National Grid, the gas ball lot. And we have been disputing for a while. And recall that we objected to the transfer of that to 11 Bridge Street, which is an LLC owned or controlled by Adam Potter. The PSC has taken the case. We have done our filings. A number of people have been heard from. Very important in a proceeding like this that the community be measured and heard from. So we got to start on that earlier on. And I've got a memo on the table here. If you pick it up on the way out, it talks about how you go on the record before the PSC. It's as simple as a five minutes online, New York State DPS. It's very easy. There's four or five steps, get down to a comment section, and the simple message is say no to National Grid giving this to a for-profit LLC when the village has an application to take it back. We've had it now for seven years. I'd hate to give it up, so it's time to let them hear more. I think the PSC is hitting a critical phase in this process over the next 30 days. So please do, and those of you who are part of organizations, if those organizations would be heard from, it would be timely and helpful.
Mayor, I think there's a cutoff date around March 6th submitting personal notes.
Really?
Yeah.
I wasn't really.
I'll see if I can find it online.
Okay. All the work, and then?
Yeah.
I thought that applied to when it was going to be done as a staff matter, but in any event, let's clarify that. But let them know we're watching and we're anxious. I got asked just today about two Main Street where we have a CPF application that is still in negotiation with the town. And I have no news to report on that. With that said, I will go to the treasurer before we do committee reports. And Tim has some news that we're quite excited about.
Good evening, board. As of September 31st, 2022, the revenue are just about $10.9 million. Started collecting our annual dock fees in December, and this remains up over the prior year about $79,000. To date, the docks are up $385,000 over the budgeted amount. So later, the board will be voting on this resolution to adopt the budget to account for the variance. And we're to use these funds to purchase the floating dock material and electrical costs of $310,000. For material purchases that will be put towards the expansion of the transient dock project, reducing the overall amount for the village of the bond core. So we'll save probably estimated about $30,000 in interest over this five-year bond that we're projecting to get. And then other stuff, the revenue for the Justice Court is down from $163,000 to the slower activity in the courts. Other revenues that are also slightly down over the year are the alarm fees and permanent fees as well. Expenditure-wise, we're up 53% of our budget at $9.3 million compared to the prior year, we're about $8.9 million. In December, we had some expenses related to the sewer there than Washington, about $23,000. And then installation of that sewer pipe, $72,000. Other expense that we had was the village paid, East Hampton Village with their share of the dispatching contract for ambulance and PD. And the additional costs related to the sewer expansion, Super Shet K, about $40,000 towards Cameron Engineering. That's overall of the report.
And that expense to Cameron Engineering should be covered by reimbursable grants, eventually. Yeah.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
And can I also, sure, I think that, Tim, correct me, please, but the temporary dock that we are bonding and funding, that the revenues that we will get will more than offset the cost of the dock and the bond, while only five years, the temporary dock is expected to last much longer than that as well, correct?
The temporary dock will be hopefully 20, 25 years, 20, 30 years, per, you know, New York State. And then we're expected, estimated from Harbor, Bob Wore, of $450 each year in revenue from that expansion, just from that transient expansion. So then the bond we're looking at right now is probably over the next five years, about $40,000 in interest, principal, and then also some fees as well that go off. So that should more than cover that. And then a little surplus each year towards income for the dock.
Thank you.
Any other questions coming? Thank you, Jim. I would just say that as we look at the waterfront as essential asset, of course, of the village, the transient dock, which is very much in demand, we're getting bookings all through the summer, as early as January, February, generates income for the village. Because most people who visit for an overnight or a weekend, then get out and live in the village. They go out for dinner, they go to the shops and so forth. So bringing that up to date, considering that the wharf has been redone and made very, very attractive, commercially successful, this now completes the larger project, which is to have all elements of that waterfront asset in top condition. And special kudos to Bob, who turns out is a super businessman in addition to all his other many attributes. And we really are seeing tremendous success on the waterfront. And this project will advance us well, well down, down the line. So thank you for that. We have two resolutions, I think, that we have to address that with. I'll quickly give the departmental reports from my end of the table. And the Buildings Department is seeing a significant falloff in January, measured in dollars to the year before. It's something we've seen coming. The volume is simply down. And the first stat of the new year, if you will, January to January, a year ago, we did $74,000 in revenues associated with the Building Department services. And that number for January 2023 is down to just shy of $43,000. So we're going to see some, I think, continuing tightening as the level of activity continues to ease off. People have different theories about how much of it was COVID-driven or other-driven. Any event, the numbers speak, and they are lighter than they were a year ago. The Buildings, the Building Department is otherwise seeing a lot of applications. And we, as part of the report, include that the Fire Marshal is active as well. And that's a still growing part of the work that's being done in the department. So under Bruce Scavoni, there were a total of 30 violations in the month of January that were addressed by the department. And I think that level of vigilance is very important, given the recent history that we've had. The code enforcement has also been active, the report is there. The number of violations in January was 14, routine inspections averaging about seven or eight a week. And the docks and harbors, we finished the year, as I said, with this big project coming on. The connection to new revenues has been described to you. It is as quiet as it ever gets on the waterfront right now. Almost afraid to mention that we've had no ice issues this year. This is followed by a quick freeze, I'll be concerned. But the good weather, we're into the middle of February here, without a substantial icing of any kind. The, there's a few vacancies left in some seasonal dock slippings, slips and moorings. But otherwise, we're pretty much filled up for the summer ahead. The Harbor Master's boat is out of the water for minor repairs. We'll have it back in time for sometime this month. And we are focusing on prospects for getting a new Harbor Master boat. This thing we have is still functional, but it is old. And we'll have a proposal over the next month or two on a new replacement for that. And new boat will have more dynamic features than this old timer that we have. But we'll be back to you on that. The numbers so far in the year are, we finished 2022 with a difference month to month, in our first month, with $47,000 running ahead of the year before. So, so far on the waterfront, it looks like another very positive year, based on these early numbers. And they reflect a lot of the, the contracts that come in with our regular renters. Finally, Public Works and Highway, there's a lot of tar crack sealing going on. The pattern of weather and freezing and all requires that to be mounted right now. We're replacing street signs around the village as needed. PSEG has started its electrical upgrade. Everybody's seen it. They seem to be pretty good getting in and out of the different streets. Along my street, we got a great big, probably double in size to the pole that had been there before. So they're working all the way from down Bridgehampton Turnpike to Jermaine Avenue, over to Suffolk, to Sag Road. Four to six months from the beginning, we're well into the first full month of that work. Patching goes on. The salt brine machines are up and running, but we haven't needed much salt brine so far. And the sweeper is out there. The, a couple of people have raised concerns about the positioning of vehicles and equipment on the properties that we own south of the village, along the turnpike. We have the Sag Harbor, South Hampton Town Transfer Station on our property. Right next to that, we have the impound lot. Dee in the department keeps compost, cuttings, leaves, all of the work of the department on an ongoing basis. And we do, when the utilities have big projects like this, accommodate them to have their equipment and their trucks out of neighborhoods and not on the principal roads. So if you go by there now, you will see that we are again in that mode, that part of town. And that would complete my departmental reports. And Mr. Gardella, police, fire, and ambulance.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to the numbers with the Police Department, I have a note from Chief McGuire that the members, police officers are recertified on CPR, on the AED, and in first aid. And also that there were 32 parking summonses issued. I just also want to make the public aware that we received a grant through Chief McGuire's work for $32,000 for the purchase of body-worn cameras for the police officers. So we're in the process of getting some verbiage in the police contract to protect, protect the officers before they can actually wear the cameras. So the numbers for the Police Department, in the month of January, we had 662 calls for service in the month of January. We had three aggravated unlicensed, seven suspended registrations, five motor vehicle accidents. There were 11 arrests, one DWI arrest, and 56 uniform traffic tickets were issued. We're also working with D Yardley to temporarily build a wall and separate the men's, right now, it's just a single locker room. So we're going to build a wall. There's going to be a door, another door installed so that the female officers have a place to change. So that's in the works. The door's on order. It should be here, I think, in the next week or two, was ordered a couple of weeks ago, I believe. So that project's moving forward. Within mind, keeping in mind that this project's going to continue to build a permanent area for the ladies to shower, bathroom, and give them more changing space. So that, that project's in the works. And that's the Police Department report. Moving on to the Fire Department. In the month of January, the Fire Department volunteered for over 1,403 hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 40 calls for service. These calls included three structure fires, four motor vehicle accidents, and two mutual aid calls to Southampton and North Sea. In January, the Fire Department continued with training by hosting our annual Pesh Bloodborne and Hazmat Refresher classes. We also went to the Suffolk County Fire Academy for a mass confidence drill. And with the colder weather, the dive team was able to take part in an ice rescue drill. So that's the Fire Department report. The ambulance. Another note with the Fire Department. Yesterday, I sat down in a Zoom call with the owner of Metalcraft, Chief Guyer, Second Assistant Chief Guyer was with me, Counselor White, and Jay Milner, I believe his name is, who's the sales representative. And we went over line by line, each detail on the fireboat. So what I'm going to be requesting next month, or if we can do it sooner, is that the funds that we've raised be dedicated to a deposit on the boat, which would then start the process for us with the state to get the other 250 for the grant. So that's coming up.
How long does it take from order to delivery?
If we get, if we start the contract soon, they, the owner says that he can put us on the calendar to start the boat in September of this year, which would then give us a possible delivery date of spring of '24.
Right.
So moving on to the ambulance, we had, in January, we had 60 emergency calls. We had five work nights, two meetings, four training sessions, for a total of 886 man-hours, as compared to 62 emergency calls in January of '22. So we're right at the same level. We also have two first, two brand-new first responder vehicles that we received in January. Excellent vehicles. So the old, the older vehicles have been taken out of service, and the new vehicles are now in service. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coach.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the report from Suits Creek Plant. The, of the January, total gallons received in the month was 1.679 million. We removed 25,500 gallons of sludge. The DMR reports were all forwarded, well, will be forwarded on 2/15, which I guess is tomorrow. Happy Valentine's Day. Suffolk County DHS inspection date, next inspection will be 4/3, 20, 4/3. We just passed with, without fault, most recent test. That's a sort of extensive list of check items. And the, there's either satisfactory or fail. We've got satisfactory on every single item, which is a testament to the work done by the team down there. We have no complaints. Summary of operations, we saw a frequent plant running well, under all permitted levels. We are now operating two basins out of the five. Eagle control route to install a new dissolved oxygen probe in basin four. Suffolk County Health Department, as I said, for inspection, all is good. Flow decrease from December to January was approximately 136,000 gallons. Moving on to grants, to follow up on what Tom mentioned earlier, I think, you know, congratulate Police Chief Austin McGuire this week, that the department received $32,000 in state grant that will cover the purchase of 16 cameras. And that will go with the other five cameras the department already had obtained through leasing program. Other news and grants, we're about to submit a grant application for $600,000 approximately, these tapped in town for Area L. This has covered the connections from the right-of-way sewer in the street to every home in that area. When we first submitted our application, these tapped in asked us to separate that out and come back under a separate request. We had a conference in New York State today to discuss grant administration. And what the requirements are to make sure that as we administer these fairly large grants, that we comply with all the requirements of New York State. It was very helpful, and we'll have a follow-up meeting with Kate and our grant writer, Jen Messiano. I'd like to take a minute to talk about one other item that I think is very important. Tonight, most concerned with the village is that's local law 12. There's a growing sense of, I think, yeah, local law 12 will allow for unfettered development. Recently, I've been in on data requests from many concerned residents and some former elected officials to clarify the law to ensure that it is fit for purpose. So I'm asking the board to empower the reference to working with, to address these concerns of that the community has. I think it's vital that the residents of the village have confidence in the laws that we pass on their behalf. And I would love to hear your thoughts and ideas and my colleagues on court as to how we might progress this idea, if that is something you would agree with.
If I might.
Okay.
I agree that because of the timing of the enactment of local law, law, local law 12, and litigation that's pending, challenging local law 12, the board has been reluctant to speak publicly about it. And, but it doesn't mean that the law shouldn't be further clarified and the public doesn't deserve a greater understanding of the law than is currently out there. So I would agree that we can do things to further explain and clarify the law. What I'd like to suggest really is two things. One is that with the help of council, lay out kind of the roadmap of local law 12 and how it interacts with the rest of the code. Local law 12, and I believe our council's done a great job of weaving it into the rest of the village code. And I think that needs to be explained to the public and how it really works and how it really does protect the village and create a process that protects the village. And then, and then as part, once, once we do that, and that can be done rather expeditiously, because that's already a work in progress, is then invite people to comment and hear people's comments and criticisms, critiques, concerns about local law 12. And to the extent that any need to be addressed and can be addressed, we can address them.
How do we do that in an open forum?
Absolutely. And so if, if the village clerk then could schedule that, we can, we can have a body of work that's not too comprehensive or complex to ground our conversations around local law 12, to build understanding throughout the community, among the board, among everybody who's affected by local law 12, if that makes sense.
I think what Aiden's suggesting is that there be either an ad hoc committee or a town meeting, an ad hoc committee first to review just the simple terminology and the wording in the law, to clarify that it intends, it's correct in that the terminology is what was the intention. And that would come first. At least we would do that on the side. And then, but you're right, we need to then have a public review of that. I'm not sure we should come first. I think the review should come first, myself. We'd have a planner, hopefully out of town planner, a planning architect, attorney, and presumably the landscape architect or?
I think anybody who wants to comment on the law should be, should comment on the law. And ultimately, you know, the words on the paper are the law. And so I think we should start with the words on the paper, how it fits into the rest of the code, and, and then get the feedback on people's concerns about what gaps or concerns exist in the way the code is, the law is drafted. And then address them as we work through them. If we can't alleviate those concerns through the discussions and explanations of how the code works, how local law 12 works with the rest of the code, then we identify next steps.
I agree with that. I think that would be, would go a great way towards helping people get a fuller understanding. It would allow us in some respects to stress test the law by getting country, getting people to weigh in on it and to ask questions and get the answers. And we'll see if there are unintended consequences. There may be, there may not be. But I think it's incumbent upon us to go through this process. It's a very important law. It's going to describe the village for a long time to come. And it's incumbent, it's very important that people have confidence in it.
And so if we could start with, we'll have a, we'll have a draft to work off of that, that gives a better roadmap and outfits into the overall. And then schedule a meeting. We'll post that draft so people can read. And then schedule a meeting, we'll post that draft so people can review it, schedule a meeting. We can invite particular individuals to join, but it will be an open meeting that people can attend a workshop essentially.
If it's noticed, we can all attend, right, as trustees? Yeah, and we can have it on Zoom and we can have it here and have it as an open forum where people can come and. And come to the podium and express their concerns about particular aspects, people have been writing to me and highlighting. Parts of the law that they're concerned, they have concerns about, and I'd love to have them on the record here so that we can address them. And see, you know, what it is we need to fix, if anything, and then we can move ahead together as a community.
And if people have concerns now that they want to put in writing in advance of this, please send them in to. So we can start addressing them and we can prepare to address them in advance as well.
And I'll just say that there's no such thing as a perfect zoning code and, but we can strive to at least make it this one clear. To the public and um to clarify, there are some very specific items that a lot of people are troubled by. And it's just a matter of explaining it. Maybe that's it, but it needs to be out there.
Yes.
Any other comment? All right, uh thank you, Aiden. Um Mr. Plum, planning.
Oh, just following this up, I've, I've been trying to schedule a comprehensive plan, uh town meeting. Something for individuals to uh come forward and describe. What they see are the issues in the village's long-term, uh what they want to save, what they're going to get rid of, whatever it is, just get. The public's input on that matter, and maybe this could just be put together with the. Potentially the local law twelve could just be in, at the same meeting, because I assume if we wanted to do this separately or uh.
We should keep them separate, I think the local law twelve is very specific and planning will be much broader.
Okay, so then anyway, that I'm proposing to do a public town meeting for long-term planning to uh request input. And who wants to see what kind of thing, long-term? And as far as that goes, that's what we're, but the, but the planning, where we are now, uh is. Essentially awaiting that input as far as I'm concerned. Uh and that's, thank you.
All right, I'm compelled to add to that, Bob. Um on the table, folks, is a document that was prepared by Greenman Peterson, well-known firm here on Long Island. That took the two thousand and eight strategic study and reviewed it uh on behalf of the village. And gave us sort of an index and working proposal on how to take the planning process further. Um and uh. There is a working group that's being chaired by the Chairman of the Planning Board. Who need, I met again as recently as January twenty-sixth. And uh are uh using this as the working guide. To uh how one goes about not going back to uh Genesis, but rather going back to two thousand and eight. And coming forward in what was called for in that era. Uh in that document to the two thousand and eight strategic plan and along that same trail, the LWRP. When the waterfront overlay district proposal first surfaced, it described the two thousand and eight plan and LWRP. As the village's master plan. I think that might have been a little bit of overstatement, but they were the two most relevant and recent documents. Those are still with us. Uh I would invite you uh uh who are following this to, to take that with you. Um we've added uh some other folks uh to the uh. The working group that is uh working out of the planning board. When I joined the planning board six or seven years ago, I thought it was a planning board, I found it was just a site review board. Um we've tried to now bring it into an active planning mode. Uh John Shaka is our chairman and is a terrific chairman. Um I don't know how to react when I hear that you're going to prepare, propose um a large meeting. Uh but you're not participating in the work that's going on now, and I don't want to get into responding to. Some of the accusations you made this week, because this is not the place, but I want the people to, in this group to understand. That the planning process is underway in very good hands and work has been done and is being done as we speak. And uh will be um certainly a uh, a, a community, a process. Meetings will be part of that under the agency of that operation. So there is a, a, a process that is going forward.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um the LWRP is undergoing an update, it has been for how long?
Forever.
Forever. When is the last time we had a report from whoever is?
Uh we can ask Kathy Iseman, she gets the reports.
But as, as far as the update goes, I mean.
I don't know if we get it out.
I haven't seen anything on this for, as long as I remember. Is there a way that we can have a presentation from the folks that are doing this update? Because we talked about the, the funding of that on the call today, that was one of the questions, and just created this idea that. Because it is a great document and it provides great guidance for us, and I'd love to know where this update is, when it will be complete. Um been going on for some years.
Yeah, it's, in the early days of all this, it was described as a process that doesn't have a beginning and middle and end, but ongoing. Mostly what we've seen is ongoing, and you're looking for more results, I get that, so uh we can.
Okay, is this something, there could be a presentation to us? Okay, that'd be great.
What, that company that did that review came up with those suggestions based on their own knowledge and observations and whatnot. And that's good, I read it, I know it's there, I know it's happening. My point is, we want, I think it would be helpful, healthy, to have public comment in the same way, because you can guide. Sort of go anywhere, in other words, you just let them go out there and suggest stuff, uh you know, sort of crap shoot, however, if.
That's not, that's not what's happened, but go ahead.
What has been happening? I mean, how would you?
If you'd been at the meeting of the twenty-six, you would know uh that.
If I could though, so. We will, I, I will follow up and, and, because there, there was a meeting that did take place, Bob. And I had a takeaway to work on something just before I left for vacation and then got disconnected, so I apologize. I agreed to revise a document that Cassie put online and share that you weren't able to attend that meeting, but my intent was to. Working from that start an updated version, um and I, and I committed to John Chakka to doing that. Um that for you, me, John, and a couple of other people that Jim was invited to participate in this to review and update, so I apologize for that. I got sideways after I came back from vacation.
Has this committee of group taken any public input at the held a meeting?
Not yet, but we were going to start with a, with a framework of here's, here's kind of a framework we're starting with and then use that to guide a public discussion. If there's more to, to supplement, fine, but this is what we see already, and the things that we've been working on are part of that planning document. And so that's our opportunity to inform the public of some of these things that have been going on in us, apparently. If you're, if you're not on the inside disconnected way, but they are all connecting, and so this was a way to pull them together a little bit more formally.
And I think the sense we have is that um we're using this as a framework. That a community input event works much better when at least you are able to outline. Proposition of what the process should look like, where it's heading, uh some summary of what's gone before. And that's the goal we're working for. Uh I can't put a timetable on it, but it's, it's come to life. Since we brought John back to the board, so it is underway.
Well, that, that's true, although process and content are two different things. And my point is that it's the content that we want to look at, but.
Agreed.
Thank you. Um and finally, uh, uh your name again, sir?
I don't have one. Number five. Mash Park and Justice Court Report, I presume?
Yes, please.
So, Justice Court, um as Tim reported, revenues are down about a hundred thousand plus from last year. Um and the explanation is that things have just been slower in the Justice Court, which I hope is a good sign that. There are fewer violations going on around the village, frankly, post-COVID. I think I'd ask, and I'm going to ask you and put you on the spot, Tom, I'm sorry, but if um, because the data. I would ask, could you check just to see if, if the data coming out of the police department. Is consistent with that, that things have calmed down a little bit in the village from a violation perspective?
So what, what happened with our TCOs, because a lot of this goes to that, is that we had. Basically, it's like having a senior class, so we, we had. We had all these TCOs that either became, went into the academy, some of them went into the academy and became part-time officers. So we had a turnover of those officers, we had a, a lot of younger TCOs on the job. So maybe they were not as aggressive with writing summonses, there's a little bit of a learning curve there, so that could be some part of the explanation.
That's, that makes sense, that's helpful, a lot of, a lot of the revenues that come through the justice report come out of, frankly, parking violations. Um much like New York City, I think I remember hearing that in New York City, parking was the third biggest revenue generator.
That hundred thousand of possibly, that it's down, what percentage does that represent?
It went from like four-thirty to about three-thirty.
That's, that's twenty-five percent.
It was pretty significant drop.
It's kind of outside of what you would imagine.
And we were watching this in the fourth quarter, third quarter of last year, that it was, you know, we were trending down most of all last year. And the explanation was just there's less activity coming through the court, the justice court, um which again, might be a good thing. Might be explained in part because we, we, we had less experienced TCOs.
There's, there's also, you have to take into account, when there's events that are held. Um you're pulling the TCOs away from their main duty, which is to, to check the parking and write parking summonses. To managing scenes, managing events, or, or watch being, you know.
And post-COVID, we probably had more events than we did during COVID two.
So that, that's a factor, so if you start to add all these factors.
But I think that the revenues dipped low, excuse me, even the pre-COVID levels. So it's, we should continue to keep an eye on it, but again, all the more reason why it's helpful that the. You know, transit, transit dock, transitory docks and are going to be not just paying for themselves. But generating revenues for the business, for the, for the village, because we are losing revenues in other areas. It sounded like the building department and certainly in the justice court, relative to prior years. And it's not that we're in this to generate revenues, but it does matter. That's the justice court. Uh and by the way, we also had a change of personnel in the justice court to last month. February first, so some of the reporting is lagging as that employee becomes um acclimated to the new role, so. We will start getting the data um on a monthly basis again, starting next month.
This is a very good appointment, uh the judge has made, uh we have made together, uh of a seasoned uh. Court clerk, uh essentially from East Hampton, uh that has a working experience uh of many, many decades at this point, so. They have very straight, very strong addition to this.
And then Mash Park, um. Probably the most important issue to deal with in Mash Park is we are negotiating with the school. Um over the capital improvements to the park fields, um those are, uh, negotiations are ongoing, we met again this morning on those. Not surprisingly, everything is tied a little bit to the Marsden acquisition that's going on um between the school and, and Southampton Town. That is not changing the fact that the school and the park are still negotiating. For the school to um invest in renovating and updating the park fields as well. Um and I'm, I'm, I feel encouraged by the conversations we had this morning, um there are a lot of contingencies that. Um the school and the park are planning for, depending on what, how, how Marsden goes, and so um. All I can say is we, we continue to be proactively discussing, negotiating, and planning for whatever the eventual outcome is. Um with Marsden, and um we look forward to being able to move forward at some point, hopefully in the next month or so, with plans.
Thank you, Red. Uh that conclude, completes the departmental reports. I would hear a motion to accept all of the reports, mayor, treas, treasurers and departments, uh is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
They are approved, thank you very much. Uh we have now a fifteen-minute comment period. Uh to be confined to the reports that have just been made. Uh as we do, I, I do want to make one point about this and then the section, session we have later in the meeting, which has been a practice now for the last few years. Um anybody can come forward and talk about anything, and uh, uh we cannot. Interface on this particular matter, uh because we're in litigation. But that should not prevent anybody who wants to be on the record and heard. I get mail, I hear from people as well, Aiden. Uh and um uh people do express on a regular basis their concerns about. Uh Bridge Street and, and, and matters that are going on there. So as we open this session tonight, and with the later session, and as we go forward. There is always the opportunity to communicate directly to Village Hall. And uh to take advantage of these public sessions here. That doesn't mean on this particular matter we can respond because of. Protocols of litigation, but uh so, in any event, this is a fifteen-minute comment period now on any of the reports. Uh which you've included, uh reference to uh.
Somebody's asking on Zoom.
You have, you have somebody? All right, go ahead, Catherine Levy.
Hi, um I very much appreciate the motion that trustee Corish made about local law twelve. I think this is long overdue, um and I appreciate the discussion that I hope we'll have as a community about it. I have to say, however, I believe there are two reasons why the law needs to be repealed. The first one is the way it was passed. There was inadequate SECPRA review. And I think there was inadequate public discussion. A law that's as consequential as local law twelve to our future, something that um trustee Corish alluded to. Should be the subject of months of discussion and debate and examination by the community. It should not be the subject of public comment in three regular board of trustees meetings. So respectfully, although I very much appreciate um trustee Corish's attempt. To open up the conversation about local law twelve and trustee Plums and trustee Hayes. Um belief that we should do so as well, and I, I hope that we can all have a constructive conversation about the law. I think the law is riddled with problems and riddled with opportunities for developers to. Fundamentally change our village in a bad way, I think as we've already seen with the Bridge Street proposal. I think it needs to be repealed, and then we as a community can come together for the serious, rigorous, community-wide discussion. That a highly consequential change to our zoning codes requires. Thank you all very much.
Uh anyone else, anyone else? April, please come up.
No, you're okay, you're.
Stand on your toes.
I, I'd like to, I'd also like to offer my deep gratitude to all three of the trustees that spoke out. For um taking a reexamination of local law twelve. I hear about it constantly as well and. Public discussion is very much appreciated, we've been, we've been. Many people and myself, including myself, have been hoping that this would happen, so I'm deeply, deeply, deeply grateful to you. For this um offer. Um I wanted to know, first of all, I actually don't really know the temporary dock is, where is that located? I just like to ask.
Uh we use the terms interchangeably, the transient dock, when you stand on the wharf. Along the west side, there's a ramp that goes down, we have a series of floating docks. Along there that um are going to be renewed and reconfigured.
Thank you, I was just curious. Also, uh is there an address or for um access to the, to the. What we go to the national grid, encouraging them to.
Yeah, there's a page right there on the table.
But is it on the village website?
It is on the village website, and there's a link that will take you right there.
So people can be directed.
Yeah, it's also, if you go on both of the private village Facebook pages, I posted it there some time ago now, I could repost it again. Um with the cutoff date.
Yeah, I think it's really important that people know that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll repost that again tomorrow, so it'll be on top of the file, so to speak.
Um and may I ask you? And may I ask you, I know that it is the next thing on the agenda, the local law amending Village Code, Chapter two fifteen to create rental registry permit requirement. As a co-founder of the church, I'm concerned about how this would affect our visiting artists, writers, dancers, et cetera, et cetera, how this would affect the way that we have to grow our people staying with us. If we have to actually put in a lease, even though those people are not paying for it. I just, I would like to know.
April, if I might, it is the first introduction we're going to do. Let us do the introduction, open it up and bring your comments in the context of that introduction.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Is that Anthony back there? Sure, come up.
I have the neighbor of mine, six eighty Union Street. I'd like to talk about local law twelve. I, you know, I got in my mail yesterday, I'm sure some of you have as well, the fires that Safe Sag Harbor put out. I'd like to say that, you know, is, is inappropriate and unnecessary that I think Safe Sag Harbor's lawsuit and scare tactics and calls for repeal to, calls for the repeal of local law twelve are, I do think that there are some flaws in the law as it's written. I want to give three specific suggestions today rather than just, you know, we can keep talking and talking for months, but I want to just give three specific suggestions. One is that there should be a limit on the number of properties that can be combined to create affordable workforce housing. Intend there is to keep somebody as with what happened with that, that Otter project, prevent somebody from buying up a whole village block for, for that purpose. It could be something that could even be for other development purposes.
If I could just, a quick question now. To limit the combination of properties for affordable housing purposes.
Right.
Is there a larger issue there to prevent the combination of properties for other purposes?
I'm saying it could potentially be extended to other purposes as well, but I'm just addressing specifically rule, well, the combination of single and separate properties being combined for a development.
Got it.
Whether, you know, two or three is limited, I don't know, but just suggesting that could be one way to avoid something like the Otter project, remember appearing again. The other thing I would suggest is specifically there'd be an upper limit to the number of units that could be in any specific affordable warehouse project. I, once again, I don't know if that limit should be five units or fifty units, certainly shouldn't be seventy-nine units, but you know, just some sort of limit, upper limit on that. The third thing is something which be, which I did mention at the, when the law was originally passed about potentially lowering the, the maximum size of a unit from, I mean, the minimum allowable size of a, of a single unit from five hundred square feet to four hundred square feet. Well, that will, I think, allow people, will just give a little bit more flexibility, I think, to people as they're going through the process, like another multiple boards that.
You're talking about for accessory.
For, no, for, for affordable workhouse, for, for housing units. I think in the code, in the twelve, that's the five hundred.
Multiple units, you mean?
No, individual units within.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right. So in other words, an apartment five hundred square feet, I believe, is the minimum size that's allowed. I think that should be lower to four hundred square feet. That will allow some flexibility to adjust the, the design as you're going through the process. You know, if somebody says, okay, this is a good project, but it, you know, could you be scaled down a bit? And that will give some design flexibility by doing that. So those three specific suggestions. I don't, I know that litigation, the unfortunate litigation may, may stymie this, this discussion, but if it's possible, I think just, just to move pace with it, with this. It seems like there are simple amendments that make a big difference and really improve the code and prevent something like that Otter project from ever appearing again.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gabe, Gabe Scovani?
I have two things. First, I'd like to address Mr. Crush. Mr. Crush, you've got to be very careful. You have an eight-inch line underneath Long Island Avenue and it's already at its just about capacity now for flow for, for what we call fixture units. It's, it has a one percent grade according to the engineering, engineering papers that I have. We're around eighteen hundred fixture units about. There's each bathroom, there's six fixture units in each bathroom. There's two, you gotta check these, you know, these are the figures that.
Right.
Every, every kitchen is, is two fixture units, every laundry is two fixture units, every I can't find what a fifty-seat restaurant is, and we have four of them on the line.
Well, we've been calculating through with Cameron Engineering, all of the layouts and everything has been done, has been calculated using what we have existing and then suggesting upgrades that we may need. We're talking about some of the areas laying a second pipe once the trenches open, that we'll drop a second pipe that will be capped for future use so that we could tap into that.
You already have maximum now, I'll tell you. If you're not, you're very, very close to it.
And we allow three hundred gallons per day for each dwelling, which is.
What's gonna happen is just like they did it at the, at the Boulevard building. The pipe was too small, the, the exit pipe for the building was too small for the amount, for the amount of units they had put on it and they had to go to court.
Well, I shall take your advice and I shall bring this up with our consultant engineer at Cal, because I understand that, you know, that he knows more about this. You know, and I really appreciate.
And then I came here also to beg for your help, the five trustees, to help me with my permit. Because I, I need help. I mean, I've been at this for a long time and I don't seem to be getting anywhere. Maybe you can make a special exception or something, please. I'm begging you to help, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Uh, anybody else? Belle?
So without segueing into what Mr. Scovani had said, with the, let's say outreach of the sewer system. I, it hadn't occurred to me initially that there are myriad of benefits to that system as it relates to clearing. Why, folks don't realize, we've had, you know, proliferation of new construction in the village where you will see every single lot is mandated by some company for a low nitrogen septic system, which eats up maybe double the amount of real estate as a conventional. So I see benefit to what you're doing, as is evidenced with a new home on Church Street. We see a new house on Mammoth Street. The lots have been clear cut to the point where every old growth tree has been taken off the site. And I feel as if it's forever changing the character of the historic district. These trees many have grown eighty years, a hundred years. So thank you for that because it's a plus side. Whereas I can see what Mr. Scovani had just stated, you look at the sewer system, it has a limited capacity. And as it gets, you know, there's a burgeoning, there's a growth, you know, we, we need bigger for more development, but at the same time, I think there's a fine balance.
There's a balance in all of this and trying to work it through.
Yes.
And we're hoping that as we develop this part of the plan, that we'll see benefits to the water and then we can use that result to go back to the state to get more money. And this is not going to be one size fits all. I think various neighborhoods are going, you know, there's an opportunity maybe for a community IA system that would serve well, perhaps. And we can look at other technologies. We're looking at, you know, to service parts of the village. It's, I wonder, it'd be expensive and ideally it would be great if we could, if we could service the entire village. But it's a process we're working on step by step. And I love the input and people's interest in this.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's sort of an under the radar thing in a way. You don't really get to see it until it's a real problem. Yeah.
Well, many don't.
Then you know. Then you know, then you're.
Well, I think a lot of people who are laypeople may not realize that the low nitrogen system is contained. So that sewage can never really reach into groundwater as it previously did. These systems need to be pumped yearly. They require a small motor like an egg beater, which liquefies all of the solids. So in effect, each homeowner has their own onsite sewage treatment plant. So it's not as if you're, if this program didn't happen, you would still be mitigating the potential harm to the water, but I like the fact that you're limiting clear cutting of property. And that was one thing why I came forth tonight also was to inquire about this broader code. Will it apply to every parcel within the village? It doesn't specifically say, is it commercial, is it residential, is it every property within the village needs embossed? Just in terms of clear cutting, period.
Oh, right.
That's the next section again.
That's the next section. We'll, we'll get to that.
Very good. Stay tuned for that, but thank you for the good work. Thank you. And thank you to trustee Gardella for the far announced potential with living space above. Back to what Mr. Vermondwa has said, you have a difficult thing in terms of a great need for something like this. Unfortunately, our code or the way it exists now, I feel it's like a no-win situation because you're going to have pushback until something becomes a little bit more reasonable. And what you're proposing is perfect. It's done all over the country, any case examples of that, and hopefully there won't be pushback from neighbors. So thank you.
So far, we've had a lot of support from local officials also, so.
We, we need more of that. And thank you for your work.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you. That'll close the public comment period. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Stacy. I have a letter.
Your letter was received tonight. Do you want to?
So I don't need to do any of that.
Well, we have it, but if you want to talk for a moment, that's okay.
Do I read it into the public record?
I don't think it's necessary, but just.
Going once?
I think your letter referenced a previous version of the law. We, you used the letter that referenced the sixteen pages that.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
That's the next section anyway.
We're going to get to that.
We're going to get to that. And I think you'll find that what's on the agenda tonight is different than what you had commented on.
Less complicated.
Less complicated by a lot.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So the public comment period is closed. We have an introduction, local law amending Village Code, Chapter two fifteen, to create a rental registry permit requirement. And this is a process that's been led by council and we have had a succession of drafts that have worked their way forward. And Liz, do you want to give a very quick introduction? And Aiden has stepped into this issue as well. So let me start with counsel.
Absolutely.
Sure. Trustee Corish worked on this with me. Essentially, this is going to amend the existing Village Code, Chapter two fifteen to expand the requirements for rental registry permit. Right now, we just in the code already, we enacted amendments to two fifteen last year to accommodate those persons who are renting property and want to be paid upfront for the seasonal rentals. The New York State law was changed at the time, so we mirrored that law to allow for people renting those properties to get the rent, seasonal rental monies upfront, which was prohibited before that, that amendment. So now this is actually going to amend the existing Chapter two fifteen to create a rental registry permit that goes through the building department rather than through the village clerk's office. And it would introduce your typical definition section to the code. And then the only real addition to this code is requiring a written certification from a licensed architect, engineer, home inspector stating that the rental property complies in all respects with the New York State Building Code, Fire Code, and as may relate to the basement occupancy, smoke and carbon monoxide alarms and pools. In lieu of a certification, the applicant can also request an inspection to be conducted by the enforcement authority. So that's the only addition truly to the rental registry application requirements. And then there's a notice of violation section, which is already in the code, and the penalties section, which is already in the code as well. So that would be the addition. And I think the board is going to work on and discuss the effective date when it would take effect.
Right. I think the reality, I think it's a necessary, it's something that's necessary for the village. In my anecdotal and, and in polling local architects, I found nobody who was willing to walk into a stranger's home to, to certify that it complied with all the laws. So I think this is something that will come up. In a working environment, it will come into the building department. I think what we decide on when we expect this to become active, we need to consider the workload that the building department will be faced. Because I really believe that they will end up carrying out most, if not all, of these inspections. I also know that from the voluntary, the voluntary application that we had from on the books of last year, we, we haven't had anybody.
One came in today.
One came in today. Okay. So that's the first one of all of that. So it's just something to think about as we move ahead as to whether we want this to be effective from the workload on the, on the building department, what we can expect.
I have a question. Have we talked about, or is it possible to do self-certification? In other words, the homeowner comes in and says, yes, I certify this as a homeowner?
I have never seen like self-certification yet. I've just seen where you can get a home inspector, architect or engineer to certify for you.
I seem to not have self-certification on.
The existing, the existing form that we have, you tick a box to say that.
Well, I don't think that's the similar with respect to the application of New York State Building Code and Fire Code as to those four items that you were concerned with.
I think we should, we're going to have to continue this discussion because there's certain things in here, being in the building industry that can make this somewhat cumbersome. I think we're going to need to talk that to public. We have public input coming out.
This will set, this, this resolution sets a public hearing on the proposed local law for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
This is, this is the start of that process. What we did, we've worked, the folks have been working these months that it's far enough along to bring it forward, but I think we all recognize it still needs some kind of work on different elements of it. So this formalizes the process.
I would just like interject also that I'm not too happy with like the village taking on more liability when we have to. And I don't know if that's the case or not. When they do an inspection, there's a certifying that the building's is okay at that moment, literally. If he walks outdoors and somebody takes a smoke detector down, that's their problem. But I just have an aversion to taking on the village being responsible, legally responsible in some ways, but maybe it has to be. Maybe this is what.
As soon as we mention architects and engineers and home inspectors, I'd love to hear from architects in the community as to what their reaction, once you have a chance to read it, how you feel about it, and if it's something that you would ever consider participating in. I see that.
You're too backed up. I would, I would add, can I off the record to say, as an architect, it's a huge liability risk. And I might add, if you require the homeowner to give an updated CBO within a certain number of days of that rental, even if they need to do it year by year, it's going to alleviate the building inspector from saying, yes, I inspected. The homeowner would say, I have a CBO, this house is occupiable and it's got smoke, CO detectors and so on, pool ones. And the owner of the home takes on all liability. That's the way you do it from the building.
Okay. I, well, I think we need, thank you, Belle. I think what we need to do is, we do have a public hearing that we're going to authorize by making this introduction formal. And that's where we need to talk about all of these considerations.
Be on the record would be great. I have some stuff there.
All right. So.
I'll make the motion that we introduce it.
Thank you. Any other comment on the board? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. There will be a public hearing in thirty days. Next up, a introduction, setting a public hearing to consider local law establishing clearing regulations in Chapter three hundred, land clearing regulations. This again is a process that's been underway. We've looked at a lot of other jurisdictions in terms of how they've approached. Uh, we've looked at a lot of uh, other jurisdictions in terms of how they've approached clearing uh, aspiration for their community. And uh, we have had some strong advocacy here in our community. And we are bringing this forward at this point. Uh, it is not yet finished, uh, just as with the rental registry. But we thought it was time to get it formally before us and start bearing down on uh, what the actual content would be. So that's how it comes to us tonight. So I would hear a motion to introduce.
I'll make the motion introduce.
Uh, and second.
Second.
And uh, all those in favor and any comment at this point? Yes, Cassie, who do we have? Eileen Rosenberg is one of those principal advocates in the village.
Hi, thank you so much for recognizing me. I'd like to make a statement on uh, on my behalf, but also uh, on behalf of Jane Young, uh, with whom I have worked for, shall we say, a number of years on this particular project. Um, I'll try to be very brief, so I wrote something down. Jane and I, as you know, have been working on uh, this clearing legislation for quite some time and we wholeheartedly applaud applaud Mayor LaRaca for finally putting legislation on the agenda for consideration by the V B O T. It's really very gratifying to finally envision our village closer to having these much needed protections in place. The draft that's currently before you, I don't know if you had a chance, I sent it quite late to Kate, but um, Cassio, I don't know if you had a chance yet to look at some of the recommendations that Jane and I uh, have shared with you. We feel strongly, there, I think there are five additional recommendations, but we feel strongly that these recommendations will give much needed backbone to the legislation. And we know that you will give serious attention to them. So we sincerely thank, I don't think I have to go over them at this point. It's probably premature, but we sincerely thank the mayor and the trustees for their consideration of this important legislation, which will greatly benefit our village. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Eileen, and thank you for your work on this. Uh, you've labored a long.
I'm more gray than I ever was before. I'm not up to you yet, Jim, but getting there.
I've been here a long time.
I'd like to. You know, what, what, once a big tree is gone, it's gone. And therefore, there's no rec, there's no real recompense for that. There are other municipalities in California and other places where the penalty is is a uh, a stay on your billing permit. It's sometimes, it's a lot. It's sometimes.
Yes.
Here, uh, I know in Malibu, California, it's three years. So no one does it. Uh, so I would just like to interject that as as a possible route, because five thousand dollars, okay, the tree's gone. I mean, what are you gonna do?
Thank you, Bob. That is one of the recommendations. We felt that um, the current uh, penalties that are on in the code are so nominal as to be irrelevant for most developers. Uh, they're happy to cut down a large tree, uh, pay a thousand dollars, five hundred dollars and move on. Um, but we would like penalties to be greater. Uh, we would also like revegetation to be part of that uh, plan. Of course, you can't replace a a tree of a caliper of nineteen inches. That being said, there are other, there's other recourse and we hope to have that in the final legislation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Eileen, thank you very much. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. Anthony.
Hello again. Uh, you know, I remember a few years ago, there was a similar law that uh, that was presented for uh, clearing restrictions. And I remember I had to get up and signal signal my opposition to it, because on a practical level, it just wasn't workable. Then it just disappeared, because I think a lot of people agreed with me. Um, I have to say, my first pass at this this role, it's much, much better. Um, I think it's going to be a lot more workable on a practical level. So I mean, I would need to take a little closer look over it uh, over the next month, but I think you're um, you're on the right track. So good work.
Thank you, Anthony. Anybody else? All right, uh, would you hear then a motion to introduce?
So we were, I think we already did. Me and Ed and everybody agreed.
Everybody agreed. So I would hear uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next up, a resolution setting public hearing to consider a local law to amend the village code chapter three hundred zoning with regard to the waterfront overlay district standards. Let's start with a motion. Um, Bob, um, is there a second?
Second.
Aiden, thank you. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the matter is before us. I uh, God, I'm jumping the gun there. I'm not easily trained, is it? The uh, I think the best description of what we're trying to do here is clarify a portion of the code that was uh, had raised questions. And I would ask Liz to describe what we have here.
So this is an amendment um, to the waterfront overlay district standards, uh, to clarify the definition of waterfront lots. And also to limit the permitted height of structures on waterfront lots uh, in the waterfront overlay district to twenty-five feet to ensure view sheds to the waterfront are preserved. So essentially, uh, it's amending um, the definition section um, in three hundred dash fifteen point three C of a waterfront lot, which will now include um, a lot that abuts a water body, um, abutting a park that abuts a water body and also a lot that abuts an easement, private road, private access, right of way or flag that abuts a water body or park that abuts a waterway. It seems excessive, but there is a diagram also, which will replace the existing diagram in the code to elaborate on that definition. It also eliminates a portion of section three hundred dash fifteen point three D to eliminate the third, the section that reflected third stories with a maximum of thirty-five feet may be permitted on waterfront lots in the V B zoning district. And um, it it requires that they remain uh, twenty-five feet for waterfront lots in the in the waterfront overlay district, for waterfront lots. Does everybody understand that?
You know, pictures worth a thousand words. This diagram is on the the website.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of sense when you see this.
Saying they're only doing five feet on the one.
Just for waterfront lots.
So not the rest of the lots in the waterfront overlay district.
Correct.
What I think it should be throughout.
If we're gonna take a public comment, can we do it formally?
This would, this is, this is the proposed local law. It's, this resolution sets a public hearing for March fourteenth to hear from the public on this proposed law.
Right.
Okay, well, let's get into introduction.
You did.
And um, uh, we have a hearing built into this for thirty days from now. Does anyone else want to be heard on it now?
No, I'm good for that.
Okay. April, I, if, uh, if the proposal would be to uh, expand that feature of the overlay district to the rest of the village, uh, certainly bring it forward during this period.
Not now.
Thank you for the preview. See how easy that was? All right, um. All those in favor of um proceeding indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. It is set for public hearing thirty days from now. Uh, we now go to public hearings that are already open. A local law amending uh, three hundred with regard to site plan procedure to create a pre-submission hearing requirement.
Jim, you're going to open the public hearing. For this one, it's not already open. This is opening the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, this is a, we're to open a public hearing. That was was scheduled from last meeting.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to open the hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen, for saving me again. Are there people that like to be heard on in the public here?
No, I was just gonna say aye.
Yeah.
Opposed, everyone is agreed. Thank you. Now we're reopened. Is there anyone cared to be heard on this matter? Liz, would you give a very quick summary?
That would be great.
Sure. So uh, this amends the actual site plan um, application procedure section of the code and village code section three hundred dash fourteen point five uh, to create what's a pre-submission conference hearing process for certain site plan applications that come to the village of Sec Harbor. This will, uh, there's already a pre-submission uh, conference work session in the code. Uh, but this would eliminate that section and create a new pre-submission conference, which would include the requirement of holding a public hearing. Uh, so when a certain site plan is actually submitted, the first thing the board will do is is have a pre-submission conference, which is actually constitutes a public hearing process. So the board will, the planning board will actually be able to hear from the public uh, before the application is deemed complete, before seeker is conducted, to allow the public to weigh in on these aspects as well, right at the beginning.
Would that be noticed thirty days like every other public hearing?
I believe it's ten days, ten days public notice. Um, and then the planning, um, the planner for the for the planning board will will write a pre-submission report. Um, and and they'll issue that report and they'll move forward from there.
Question, um, is it only for submissions to the planning board? What if the submission, for example, comes to the village board like when we had not?
This is really only for a site plan application. So it's only to, this is not for a special exception permit application. This is for a site plan application to the planning board. And it's their procedure.
Okay.
And it's just amending their pre-submission requirement, conference requirement, where you go in with a cup for a conference with the board, introduce your plan and get some initial feedback to require that a public hearing be held, so that the public can give feedback on that as well. And it could help inform SECR and other information the board takes away from that.
Would you recommend including it for special exemption use or not?
For special exception use permits?
I'm sorry, yes.
Um, I think the majority of special exception use permits will have to go for a site plan application before the board anyway. So it's very likely that they'll have a a pre-submission conference hearing like this. Um, it depends where the applicant will start, but.
Then does it make?
A pre, just so you know, a special exception use permit by law always requires a public hearing. Just this is a different situation where a site plan application that would normally require a hearing, this won't satisfy the requirement necessarily, but it'll add an additional hearing right at the beginning for site plans.
I'll excuse me, more public input.
But it's, it sounds like what you're saying is that we already get that for this special exception use.
Well, there's a requirement to have a public hearing.
Yes.
But it's not at the beginning, not like.
Oh.
It's not right at the beginning like this. This, but the majority of special, like, the majority of special exception use permits will require a site plan application go before the planning board. Therefore, this will occur, this will occur necessarily.
So what does this change in relative to what we have now?
What you have now is a a developer can come in for with a site plan to the planning board and show them the plan and get initial feedback from the board. It's just between the board and the and the person applying. Now it requires the board to hold a public hearing and hear from the public on that matter as well.
Before they give.
Right.
Yeah, because that's a chronic problem.
Before they give their pre-submission report. The pre-submission report will include the comments from the public. It could help inform the secret determination with public input. And that, that's the purpose of it.
Okay.
Okay, seems like a good idea.
So where are we? We um.
We have to leave this open, am I correct?
This is open, we will leave it open?
That's up to you. Well, you have to hear from the public. I don't know if anyone wants to speak from the.
This is a public hearing now, so you can be heard on this as open.
What are you doing? Are you just making another layer to go through?
You'll have to come up if you want.
Are you just making another layer of hearings to go through? Is that what you're doing?
It's adding another hearing. Yeah, it's adding another hearing.
Well.
Okay, so coincidentally, I have a project which is going through under these attempts at planning board review. And that's the protocol where you have a pre-submission application. Before it gets to a formal application, you actually talk with planner, planners, period. You go over everything from your planting, your lighting, your parking, your traffic study. Anything that could have potential adverse impact on your community is discussed in advance. You won't have a situation where someone's going to come in with a fully completed set of plans and say, here, what do you think? Because that's unfair to the board, at the same time, it's unfair to the applicant, who's done probably a great amount of work to get them from point A to point B. So like the architectural review board has discussion items. This is a great mechanism, I think, to prevent in the future people force eating aboard a fully baked design where they can come in and do an exploratory process. So to Mr. Shaboni's point, it's not another who, I think it's to the applicant's benefit to have feedback. So they know, are we heading in a pleasing direction to the community? And if not, they alter the plan before it goes to a public hearing. So I would highly encourage that.
Trustee, hey, I have to apologize. I misspoke. You know, I worked on this for the last meeting, so I did incorporate um, that it would apply to also special exception use permits for the board trustees.
Thank you. Thanks. I I thought you mentioned that before.
Yeah, it it is included. I just forgot. Sorry.
Me too.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so this hearing is open and we'll leave it open going.
It's up to the board. It's it's actually on, um, there's a resolution of adoption prepared for you for tonight. We've heard from the South County Planning Commission. Um, we believe it's a take-two action pursuant to SECR, so the board could act and adopt this if they wish. Or if you want to keep it open for more public comment, you can do that as well. It's the board's prerogative.
Let me hear the board.
If there's no more public input, I'm fine for adoption. If there's an expectation that there'd be more public input, I'm happy to wait.
We've, we've done, we've had the thirty day waiting period at top.
I mean, in light of Val's comments, if it's going to help the applicant, you know, in the process, then I'm 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 okay with adopting it.
I'm okay with adopting. I think it encourages the conversation to the benefit of everybody.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too. Based on my experience with the Z B A, it's, you get these things that are just way too far prepared, is the only word, and this would head that off.
I agree.
I would then hear a uh, motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, agreed. I would also now hear a motion to adopt.
I'll move it.
Is there a motion? And a second, Bob? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Uh, next up is a local law extending the season for paid parking regulations in chapters two sixty-five. I would just uh, invite Mr. Parking to.
This is extending the season. Um, we would, uh, we would uh, start on May first and we would end November thirtieth. So it extends, I guess, four weeks on the front end and maybe eight to six weeks on the back end.
Correct.
Um, with the same regulations.
I'll make the motion to open.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
All right, um, well, this is already open.
We have to open a public hearing.
Right.
Open the public hearing.
We just did that.
Yeah.
So now we have public input.
I would ask you, um, is it, is it a fair question to ask whether Tim can do this or you have through the Park Mobile to project what, based on the income now of a season and a half, if we can make any estimate of what the additional revenue might be if we adopt this?
We could not, right?
By length.
By length of the season. I mean, it's gonna be, it's sort of difficult, because the use drops off. You don't get the, you'll get weekend use, but you won't get Monday to Friday.
Come on, commit to the justice court shortfall.
Come on. I could run some, I I could run a couple of numbers for you, but not not right now.
Oh, I don't know. What I would, uh, going forward, if if there was a particularly Park Mobile. What I would, going forward, if, if there was a particularly Park Mobile in their experience with similar.
Yeah, they might have a seasonal adjustment.
Protocol on how to do that.
Yep.
Just to estimate better than we.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have, have we had any complaints about the, the system or any complaints about?
Not whatsoever. Some actually came up to me recently and said they were visiting their, their daughter in college. And they pulled into Park and it was Park Mobile, somewhere in the Midwest, and they were able to take out their, take out their, their app and just put in the license plate of the rental, rental car they have.
Right.
And off they, it really has settled down. I think the signage and markings are much better this year. AJ did a great job on upgrading the internet that's available down there. And I heard no complaints. I didn't get any at all. AJ said he had none, so hopefully.
I don't believe we had any in Village Hall.
And the same applies to the first responders. They don't.
Absolutely. First responders never, never pay. You just have to have some identification, obviously, on the plate.
Or something.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, the amount of payments we managed to redo, and then looking ahead next year, you know, we can figure out what it is we want to do with the revenue. We may want to use it as a local match to, to leverage more funds from New York State for bigger projects. There are all sorts of opportunities there to be talked about.
You have to hear from the public.
Yeah.
Any, any Parkers out there?
They're all the city. Nine, nine percent of the Parkers don't live here, so the best.
They're banking their own zip codes.
Yes.
All right, I would hear a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I think we should go ahead in terms of the question I asked. It'll be information as we come, but.
Yeah.
Doesn't bear on the decision. So then on the, on the matter itself, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to adopt.
Adopt.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is adopted, approved. Thank you. And going forward, we've got closing public hearing section, authorization to accept the twenty twenty-two bank reconciliations and collateral reports that are contained in the packet.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, matter is agreed to. Joanne Lyles of Jordan's Honor requests permission to have a five K run walk through the village in July, July thirty, from eight to twelve, eight AM to twelve PM with a sign on the long wharf. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. Thank you. Andrew Blodorn, First Assistant Chief of the Fire Department, requests to accept the resignation of Joseph North and remove him from the insurance role. Also requests to remove, to move member Hamish McGowan from active probationary to full active member.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dee Yardley, does it works, recognizes that the following individuals have successfully completed their probationary period, Nicholas Barelli and Thomas Harrod. And we then accept the lifting or the completion of the probation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll recuse myself. I'll agree to Mr. Barelli, but I'll recuse myself for Thomas.
For the other fellow. Bill McCoy, Vice President of the Community Band, requests authorization to have their annual outdoor summer concerts at Marine Park on Tuesday nights, starting July eleven, July eleven through August twenty-nine from five thirty PM to nine thirty PM, pending insurance. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let me just put a note in here that I've met continuously with the band. The move across the street is a bit complicated, but I confirmed this week that the Legion will continue to let them keep a trailer on their property and storage and other support from the Legion that they provided all, over all of these decades, really, as it moves across the street. The new plan will take some coordination. And we've had the experience in recent years of the role in stage that does come in. I think the ladies enjoyed it one time and so forth. So I encourage this, we're continuing a valued community tradition. And I think in, in one season, the community will find that this is more comfortable, certainly. And I think it might grow some of the constituency. They'll be out on the lawn with their own chairs, if you've got a blanket, so forth. So I would move the matter for adoption. Is there a second?
Tom and Ed already.
Well, I would vote aye.
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 Thank you. Next up, Andrew Blodorn requests permission to run for the position of chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department election to be held on April sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a mental health certificate that's submitted to the board with this that says you're not crazy for taking the job? Anyway.
I'll second.
Second with enthusiasm. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why is our permission required?
They live outside of the village district.
Thank you.
We could deny it if you like. Would it be a favor to, as a favor to? Anyway, congratulations. Thank you, Andrew, for your service. And we're done with that? Okay. Michael Guyer, Second Assistant Chief, requests permission to run for the position of First Assistant Chief with all the same caveats from here.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any chance to run away? No. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Congratulations. Gary Wilson, Jr., member of the Fire Department, requests permission to run for the position of Second Assistant Chief of the department. And this again is, as with all the three outside the village.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is agreed to. Michael McCree, McCary, member of the Fire Department, requests permission to run for the position of Second Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. Thank you. Next up is a resolution for the February twenty-three expenditure transfer as contained in the packet. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. There's a, similar, the February twenty-three budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Yes.
A second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Agreed to. Authorize, and the next item is number twelve, authorizing amended building department fees. Is there any disclaimer?
It's in the upward direction, right?
Oh, yes.
Well, this, I'm sorry, this is just going off of the auditor's recommendation for any confusion, a miscalculation, just to do a standard one point two five percent across the board for it. So just makes it a little bit clearer.
Bob, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
February, next up, February twenty-three bond resolution authorizing the construction of improvements and expansion of the Long Wharf transient dock. This is the matter presented by the treasurer earlier and starts the process of the financing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to. Next is a budget adjustment for the replacement and expansion of the Long Wharf transient docks, again with the setting that was described earlier by the treasurer. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next up, resolution toward the contract for the Long Wharf transient dock replacement and expansion project. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. The details are in the packet. Next up, resolution to approve the service listing of the volunteer ambulance course service award program. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Yes, second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, matter is agreed to. The next up is a motion to accept donations. Which donations are these?
This is in regards to the fireboat. This is accepting Jack Morris's donation, as well as a few others that we received through the Fire Department.
I'll make the motion.
Great. A second, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like to, some states be able to read those into the record as to.
Yes.
I'd love to know who else made donations to the fire boat.
They were in our.
They're in the packet and the resolution, yes. So it's stated. I can, I can make copies of the other ones prior for you.
Okay, great.
Okay. Next up, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement for shared code enforcement services with the village of North Haven. We have worked out an arrangement where we're giving support to their department in exchange for fees to support this. It's, it's good, good for them because, given their relative size, we already have the infrastructure in place. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to. We put this on, but I'm going to ask that we, we put this over, and this was to award a, some work to.
I'm sorry, you just skipped. Sorry to interrupt you. You skipped number nineteen. We're just doing a resolution for the service award program, amending credit for volunteer firefighter Bruce Stafford.
Somehow that's not in here. All right.
It's number nineteen. I'm sorry you don't have it.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's the new nineteen. Okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Resolution service award program, amending the service credits for volunteer firefighter Bruce Stafford, senior.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. It's number twenty that I was beginning to talk about. That is, this relates to work and study to do with the safety issue on Route fourteen. I have a date, two weeks from Friday. We will go and meet with the DOT Regional Director and the Traffic and Safety Engineer. And I'm hoping that if we have a successful meeting, we can avoid the need for this work by our engineer.
Okay.
So it was my thought to put it over, but Tom, I wanted to make sure that's all right with you.
If you feel it's gonna accomplish what we need to accomplish.
This is the turn and the, this is the famous left hand.
Journey's end.
Journey's end.
Usually balanced?
Well, I mean, the, the subject is to seek their involvement and approval on whatever those, what makes the most sense.
The only thing, the only thing that I would ask is that, that if you're having this meeting with the DOT, that there's some form of minutes or something that the board can see what was discussed, because the issue at hand is that curve. And seeing what they, getting their input on a guardrail or some form of a system that could go there.
All right. Well, I'll see that we get a good memo out of it, too.
Because this is, from what I was told by counsel, this is the proper procedure to follow.
To get minutes.
No, to, to have, to hire somebody to reach out to this New York State DOT, but if, if the mayor feels that he can accomplish this by a meeting with the state DOT director, then by all means, I would.
Well, my instinct was to go to the head man and the traffic engineer and bring it to them. I know they've been received input from the community before, but it hasn't resulted in any resolution. So not only did I request a meeting, but I said I'll go up there myself and bring whoever makes sense for the meeting.
So then I would just like to note that you, I was put in charge of this, of finding a solution here. So I would now say that let the mayor take care of this from now on, since I tried to follow this procedure and you want to do this yourself, so that's fine. I'm okay with that.
Didn't you recuse yourself on this at one point? Because you were a friendship of the neighbor or something?
Did I?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Maybe just some form of.
Well, well, I'm sorry. At the beginning, one of the victims of the last accident had approached somebody we do. But I don't generally recuse just because I know somebody around town.
That'd be tough.
But Tom, I, I'm not sure how to respond to that. I see it as an opportunity to get higher level attention and maybe save a few bucks in the bargain.
I'm all for it.
Okay. I would hear then, all those in favor, and, well, no, I removed it from the agenda, it's stricken from the agenda. Resolution to authorize the mayor of his designated executive any and all documents pertaining to the town of East Hampton community preservation fund water quality program. I presume we mean fund.
Yes, that's for the.
Which might be. This is for which?
I believe this would be for the six hundred thousand dollars for tomorrow, if it goes out, which is a follow-up to last year's.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. I would ask now for a motion on back to deal with the section twelve approval of payment of bills for warrant number thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. This is now possibility of a second public comment period. Is anyone left standing who would like to be heard from?
I just wanted to address what trustee was asking earlier about these new docks. They should last probably at least twenty-five, thirty years. We spec these docks have these real floats, which you guys have paid for. And we have a B dock, you know, four years, not a single bit of maintenance. We have them at several locations. There's no maintenance to these docks substantially.
Do you take them out in the wintertime or they say?
Yeah, we're just breaking apart.
Gotcha.
That being said, there's, there's no moving parcels, you know, so.
I, I just want to comment. I think it's awesome.
No, I just want you to know.
And I think it's a great revenue source for the, for the village, and it's not, it's a very significant revenue source, frankly.
It's a big athlete by the village, but I just want you guys to know this, probably the top one, dark.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks very much.
Cassie?
Hello again. Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Liz Vail's work on this clear cutting legislation. She has been available, informative, just has done a wonderful job in fine tuning the original very lengthy legislation, and I really wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you so much, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Eileen. Have a good day or evening. Anybody else to be heard? All right, would hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second, our next meeting is on the fourteenth of March in the very place.
Aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. Thank you.